We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And welcome everyone to the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors regular public meeting for Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The Board of Supervisors did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of personnel and receive an educational presentation from our solicitor.
It's good.
I'm going to start off with public comments. Any citizens' comments or questions for items that are not on the agenda? You just come on up and please state your name and address.
Matthew Bigano, four-one-one Brookside. I just wanted to make a quick comment to say thank you to, he's not here, Towny. We had a nice conversation with some folks at Ambler Yards and a lot of the conversation, and I didn't pay anybody to say this, was speeding. And I promise you, I didn't tell anybody to say it. But as a result of that conversation, there was a digital speed sign put on North Spring Garden. And I just wanted to say thank you for that because I've already had some neighbors share with me how much they appreciated just being heard and having that quick turnaround time on the digital speed sign. So I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Any additional comments on items that are not on the agenda? Okay. We have a consideration of ordinance five forty-six, which is a public hearing. Is it a public hearing?
No, I'm not.
Yeah, but it says in our memo. It does say a public hearing. And I was like, why are we having a public? Okay. So consideration of ordinance five forty-six. Am I amending the street and sidewalk areas of the township code to add regulations regarding to driveways, sidewalks, and curb construction and repair, road openings, permits, and restoration. Included in the board packet is the proposed resolution. Staff is making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to approve both the ordinance and to pass a resolution establishing necessary requirements and standards for driveways, curbs, sidewalks, and roadways. Has everyone had a chance to review the ordinance? And are there any questions?
I had just a couple of very minor things. So I wasn't clear in the ordinance. Maybe it's spelled out better in the resolution. If other types of driveways besides asphalt are are being covered in in that, there was a statement saying something to the effect of before the asphalt is put down, the stone foundation should be inspected. And then I thought maybe you should define cartway in the list of terms. And then in the appendix to the to the resolution, there was a maybe a copy paste error where Horsham Township was quoted instead of Lower Gwinnett. That's all.
Who were you directing the questions or comments to? Staff?
Who? Neil, I guess.
Okay.
Well, I can't speak to the asphalt. And I'll leave that up to the township engineer. And were you referring to the specifications attached to the resolution when you said Horsham Township?
Yeah.
I didn't prepare those, so.
Okay, so let's start with this residential driveway can have can be constructed of stone, but the the first, I think, fifteen to twenty feet adjacent to the road needs to be paved. So that it does provide for other types of construction driveways. I think it's construction.
Standards ten forty-four oh four. Is it number three?
It's number three, yeah, if you scroll down. Provided that the first fifteen feet measured from the edge of the paved road is constructed in accordance with the standards of subsection A one, which is the pavement spec. And then.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you waiting for me?
I'm just, I was answering your first question, and then I was walking up here and missed the second question. Were you saying that the details had a typo that said Horsham Township? Is that what I heard, or?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, that can.
Instead of Lower Gwinnett.
Okay, that can be very easily corrected.
Yeah, I know. But I also thought maybe you should define what the cartway is.
I I believe the cartway is certainly defined in other sections of our ordinances. Neil, is that a term common enough that?
Probably doesn't require a definition. I think everybody knows what the cartway is, but you can certainly look at that. That would be a minor adjustment to this ordinance, would not require it to be re-advertised.
Okay.
That's all.
All right.
Any additional questions? Engineer, Solicitor? Any questions or concerns from the public? So we have consideration of the ordinance. Let me just get back to the ordinance number. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance five forty-six pertaining to the driveway. Sir? You just have to come up and use the microphone so the people online can hear you. I apologize.
Dan Steinman, eight hundred Norristown Road, Spring House. Are you going through all the pages, or have you completed all the discussion on this ordinance?
So if anyone had a question or a concern regarding anything that's on all the pages, we could. It is posted online. So prior to tonight's meeting, it was made available as well as it was advertised about thirty days ago.
And I have two comments.
Okay.
If I may.
Absolutely.
First one, page seven of nine, with regards to major improvements. And this is just a comment where it says township shall have it completed within four weeks of notification. My own experience is that if you have to go out and get three competitive bids, get a contract, have it approved, it doesn't give whatever property owner there is sufficient time to do it. I'm not aware of how you plan to carry this out, but that was my thoughts on it. But four weeks is a little short.
You you said you're on you're on the first ordinance, and you're saying page seven of nine. Do you have a? Is it ten forty-four eleven?
Page seven of nine, and it's one oh four five point oh three.
Oh, three. Conformity to line and grade?
No, it's oh four.
Oh, four. Notice to do work. Okay. Okay.
And there refers to four weeks to complete the job. I'm only saying I for comment, I think four weeks really cuts a property owner down considering what I said, getting competitive bids, getting approval, et cetera, and going forward.
Okay.
That's for your consideration. The next one is page eight of nine. And that is one oh four five point oh seven.
Okay, the emergency repairs.
Okay, where there is a minor improvement that requires the person to be notified by mail and only forty-eight hours to complete the improvement, where the township again will take over and build. Again, forty-eight hours, by the time you get your mail, if it's eleven o'clock, you read it, that's one day. So you go out and look for a contractor to do it. It's two days, and that's forty-eight hours. This is only comments for your consideration.
I appreciate that.
And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Well, Jim, if you want to come speak to any of that, or if you want us to ask you any questions that we have in addition?
Uh, no. So the the first.
I don't think the mic is on. I'm sorry.
This mic is not on?
Oh, now I can hear you. You had to stand up.
All right. No, it's it's all good. So the first question, Jamie, if you want to page up back up to that section. Uh, notice to do work. That's in relation to if the township notifies a property owner that they need to repair the curb or sidewalk along their front edge. So once the township notifies that homeowner, the the public bidding requirements and, you know, the need to get multiple quotes and and all that is sort of out the window. So there's no real concern. I mean, you can, we could talk about whether you, the board, think that thirty days isn't enough time for someone to to make that repair, but there's no requirement for the homeowner to get the bid. I think that was your first question.
Everyone was having their improvement. With the business center, they're not getting free bids to do it. Township gets three bids negatively in charge of that construction.
Okay, understood. I it's a matter of opinion whether or not the board feels like thirty days is enough time or if it should be extended. I mean, I think that it could certainly be extended administratively.
As I was going to say, I don't see any recourse as it relates to, I'm going back up. It doesn't preclude the township from extending more time than the thirty days that's allotted.
Yeah, and I don't think that.
Nothing in this ordinance precludes us. And I guess that maybe that's a question for a solicitor.
Yeah, I think that's true. And I think the township engineer would have the discretion to allow more time in a situation like that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't was not my intent or Fred's intent in this ordinance to roll with an iron fist and make people replace things as, you know, as soon as possible. But it's sort of, we have to put a time in there. And I I've kind of, I feel similarly to your second question. I do agree that forty-eight hours is a very tight turnaround. But I think for something to be deemed an emergency, it would need to be an unsafe condition for the walking public. At that point, I feel like if the sidewalk were to be closed and then the condition made safe, then it could the repair could take longer than forty-eight hours.
And so this is also by the opinion of the township engineer that the dangerous condition meets the level of emergency, correct?
Yeah, that's.
So it's left to your discretion?
Seems that way, yes.
Okay. I'm just clarifying. Okay.
Jim, I found the paragraph I was talking about with regard to just pointing out blacktopped instead of other options. On page six of nine, one oh four four point one oh, maybe I'm reading this too narrowly, but it it says, after the proposed driveway has been stoned in, but before the driveway has been blacktopped, the person to whom the permit has been issued shall notify the township. When I first read that, it sounded like blacktopped was the only option, and there's lots of options.
Yeah, that's basically saying that the township wants to do a visual inspection of the subbase before the paving happens. And, you know, we do that on every public project and also on any like quasi-public project where you're improving like a parking lot or a drive aisle or anything like that. I think it's just a it's it's a level of inspection prior to paving.
Yeah, my my point is not with the level in inspection. It's just it seemed like it was restricted to just blacktopped. And that's not, I know that's not what you meant, but that's the way I read it.
Okay.
It it's a very minor point.
I think a lot of, I mean, I know a lot of this is how it like becomes interpreted over time. And the certainly, the goal is to allow other types of driveways than just paved in a residential setting because you have some very sort of longer driveways or more rural type setting that we wouldn't want to make someone pave unnecessarily.
Yeah. And the reason sort of I bring it up is my driveway is gravel and it's not paved. I mean, it's not blacktopped. So there are lots of options besides blacktop.
Yeah, no, I I understand that. And we just, we want to have that first fifteen feet paved so that there's not the gravel getting drug out onto the road and, you know, mud and sediment and such. So that's the thought of the fifteen, first fifteen feet.
Okay.
Given another vote, does anyone else have any additional questions or comments? No? Any additional questions or comments from the public? Any questions or comments specifically for Jim? No? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance five forty-six pertaining to driveways, curbs, sidewalks, and roadway requirements. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up, we have the consideration to approve the resolution, which is twenty twenty-four seventeen, adopting the constructions and restoration specifications for the driveway, curbs, sidewalks, roadways within Lower Gwinnett Township. And this will be including a minor change to make sure that saying stating Lower Gwinnett Township throughout. Are there any additional questions or concerns from the board? Any additional questions or comments from the public? I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four seventeen, adopting those constructions and restoration specific specifications for driveway, curbs, sidewalks, and roadways within Lower Gwinnett Township. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you guys so much. Next up is resolution, a consideration of a resolution twenty twenty-four eighteen, supporting the Upper Dublin Township's TCDI grant application to DVR PC for a multi-municipal green ribbon trail safety and access improvement plan. Information about the plan was included in our board packet. Are there any questions? And there was a memorandum included in our board pack packet outlining the purpose and use. Is there any questions or are there any questions from the board? Or comments? Are there any questions or comments from the public? Just to be clear, the the ask of Upper Dublin Township is to ask Lower Gwinnett for an approval of this resolution as they make this application. And and pictures, I believe, were additionally outlined in the in the board packet. The resolution in addition was also included. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four eighteen, supporting Upper Dublin Township's application. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up is consideration of Access Security Corporation, a contract for replacement of our township building access control systems with Coast Stars. Included was a letter outlining, or was a memorandum outlining a recommendation, which is to approve the proposal for an upgraded access control system for the township building. This is really our keyless entry or FOB system as it relates to getting inside the building, but not just for us, but also for police, and allows that remote access to get in. The total cost for the upgrade and installation, well, no, first, the new S-two security access system for web hosting, access control from any computer on the company network, eliminating the need for dedicated server, would be a cost of thirty-six thousand one hundred and twelve dollars. There would be nineteen doors converted to this new system, and all the card readers would need to be replaced for each door. Those readers would have the added benefit of having a phone credentialing if anyone was interested. Those that would be interested in that service would be six hundred dollars. In addition, the new system that would be included would allow for handheld opening for the doors for an extended period, forced opening or opening with a key by the pass. That enhancement specifically would be twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. But the total cost for everything is sixty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars, and included is a letter from Access Security Corporation, as well as the scope of the work that would be outlined. Are there any questions from the board?
Thanks, Jim. Who might direct these questions to? How are you, sir?
I'm good, sir. How are you?
Um, so the first part is replacing all the bombs. Is that, or not replacing all the little things on the door that allow you to get in? Is that right?
Yes, and the readers, they're replacing that and the system itself.
Okay. And so what's the second, the twenty-seven thousand?
That includes, I believe, is replacing all the wiring.
Okay, all right. So we can't, yeah, I saw it. I just wasn't sure. You can't have one without the other. Is that basically the way it is?
You can. It's not recommended. Just who knows what condition the wiring that we currently have is in the walls.
And we don't know if that wiring is going to work with the new system?
It it will work with the new system. It's just, it's not recommended. And that way, the whole system, everything we know is from a certain start date.
And do we know how old the wiring is?
As old as the system, and I have no idea how old the system is. What's that?
It's before you?
Uh, way before me.
Okay, it's good enough for me. I meant here.
This is just on the township building, right? It's not Henland Wood, the community building.
Yeah, this is strictly the township building.
It's just here. Okay, yeah. Was this, did we budget for this? Did we know this was coming? Okay. Of course.
Can we, and that's the one question I had. How much did we budget for? Any additional questions or comments from the board? Any additional questions or comments from the public? Thank you so much. So we have you for us in consideration of that contract for Access Security Corporation for the replacement of access control system through Coast Stars. I'd like to make a motion to approve it. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I need to state the amount for?
You don't, because this is, this isn't a public bid. Because this is through Coast Stars, it sort of replaces the public bidding. But this was a big project, wanted to make sure the board was aware of it, you know, an improvement to the building. And a related one is that Clint also has gotten a price to replace all the locks in the building, which is about thirteen thousand dollars. Best guess is forty years of lock changes and lock changes. And we should have a museum exhibit of Fred's keychain because it's just huge now of what we need. So it's sort of along the lines of this, like get all of the security for the building redone.
With the locks, it's not replacing?
It's not replacing like the levers and all that. It's just, we're able to replace just the cylinders. And it would be replaced to, it's called an interchangeable core system. So that if somebody lost a key or left and refused to give their key back, I just go up with the key, take the core out, get another key or another core, and put it in. And the key system would be on a master system because right now you need this many keys to open the doors in the township building.
Wow, that's a lot. I got the sense too from the quote that it's all, is it going to be all automated, or will you have a master key? Like if, can you, you'll be remotely able to lock and unlock?
The access, the access control, you can remotely lock and unlock. The other thing, the thirteen thousand is for actual good old fashioned keyways.
Okay, as like a, oh, okay.
And it just, because we also have no clue, honestly, who has what keys anymore at this point, because I'm sure I I'd be surprised if they've ever been rekeyed.
And this applies for downstairs, too, with the police?
The entire building.
That's that's absolutely necessary.
And what, what if the power goes off? It doesn't affect?
We have our, well, if the power goes off for some reason, if the access control system were to fail, I mean, we have the generator that runs the building, our generator on one tank of fuel can run the building for about two and a half, three days. But if for some reason we're not able to do that, the building will still be locked. You can get access through it with the key, with the key.
The physical key.
With a physical key.
Very good.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have consideration of an intergovernmental agreement with Wissickin School District for enforcement of the bus patrol system. Included in our board packet was a letter from our chief around, or it's a letter to us, but it's around an agreement with Bus Patrol America, who would be providing a stop-arm signal arm enforcement system for each bus for the purpose of enforcing violations, which prohibits the driver of a vehicle from meeting or overtaking any school bus stopped on a highway or traffic light flashing its red signal lights. And then it outlines the violation that would be captured by bus patrol system would occur within the boundaries of Lower Gwinnett Township. Lower Gwinnett Township Police Department should have the primary authority to enforce the civil violation. There is a recommendation from our police department that the Board of Supervisors enter into this intergovernmental agreement with the Wissickin School, Board of School Directors granting the Lower Gwinnett Township Police Department the authority of civility fines within Lower Gwinnett's jurisdiction that is captured by Bus Patrol America LLC. Included in the board packet as well was that intergovernmental agreement. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Hi.
How does it work?
So the agreement we have is with Wissickin School District. The school district has an agreement with bus, whatever it's called. Okay, all three municipalities in the Wissickin School District are working on this. Neil has worked with the other solicitors. Bus Patrol America is going to put cameras on every bus on all four sides. They will deactivate it when the red lights come on and the stop sign comes off. And they have their own in-house people that'll be reviewing every video. The bus driver hits, you know, bang, there was just, somebody just passed us. The software takes care of all the issues. It all goes to Bus Patrol. They have their in-house people out near Harrisburg. They will then send us weekly an email with violations that they believe occur. We will have an in-house person that will review them. And for accuracy and identification purposes of a tag that, yeah, that looks like it was, we'll see the actual video. That was a clear violation. The tag will be run, and they'll receive a citation in the mail. The registered owner of the vehicle, it's much like the red light cameras, it's a civil violation, it's a two hundred dollar fine.
And the outfitting of the buses will be at Wissickin School District's cost?
Bus Patrol.
Oh, they pay for it.
They're paying for everything. There's there's no cost to the school district either.
How does Bus Patrol make money?
They.
The violations?
Off the violations. We're, they get a big piece. We're getting twenty-five hours of the two hundred dollar fine. But the, and I should state that from the very beginning, this has been going on for over a year now, the art presentation to Bus Patrol along all the municipalities and the school district was, we're not interested in making money.
Along all the municipalities and the school districts was, we're not interested in making money. We're interested in solving people from running, you know, red lights on school buses. Didn't matter, that is the cost, it's twenty-five dollars for us, twenty-five dollars for the school district. School district eventually will make more money. But the, the upfront cost for Bus Patrol are the cameras, the installation, the software, the backend. They're getting all of their costs out of that. They, they're in a couple districts around us, they're pretty big in Pennsylvania. Their, their turnaround profit time is year three, so it's a five-year commitment from the school district. That was one thing that, when we looked at this over a year ago. Originally this, the municipalities had to have the agreement with Bus Patrol. And originally, Whitpain Solicitor took the lead in this. And we, that happened everywhere, we didn't want, we don't want to have an agreement with Bus Patrol, we'll have an agreement with Wissickin, they work on all the details. So it's a civil violation. The registered owner of the vehicle will see, receive a citation.
I mean, I don't mean to be a cynic, but I guess I will be. We're now putting a profit motive on giving tickets. I understand the ultimate goal is safety, I get it, it makes total sense. But this sort of reminds me a little bit of privatizing. And I'm always hesitant when private parties get involved with law enforcement. But if you have no concerns, I'll defer to your judgment on this call.
I, I agree with what you're saying. I, I hear what you're saying.
But I guess there's no real other way to enforce it unless?
We can't be everywhere.
Well, or we bear the burden of the cost to put the cameras on and, and buy the technology, which would be expensive.
Right.
So they'll, so they do it first, first through the first line and they report it to you?
Correct.
And you double check their work, side workers work, pursuing?
Correct, right, and, and. Correct, we, we'll get an email and we either mark it as confirmed or deny. And Lower Providence is the nearest one that's doing it, and they have a fifty-fifty denial and okay. And then Bus Patrol sends the citation, we don't do anything, we just, we're just reviewing that video, agreeing that that's a flat-out violation.
Oh, so individuals in Lower Gwinnett Township would receive, or wherever within the Wissickin School District. Would be receiving it from Bus Patrol, not the local municipality?
Correct, it's, it's a civil penalty. Now, if they don't pay it, it goes back to us, it goes to a citation in front of district court. They do have their rights to plead not guilty and take it to court.
But do you have the, the Lower Gwinnett Township Police Department has to find a say on whether a ticket, that original ticket is going to be?
Correct, correct, we have to, we have to agree to every video that we received that it was a clear violation.
Is it pretty clear-cut, looking at the data that you're sent as to whether to issue a ticket or not?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I, I'm sorry, it, how easy is it to make that decision? You're looking at the data the company sends you and you say, oh, yes or no?
The, the samples that they've shown us, you'll see a bus stopped on Bethelm Pike at Chesterfield. Uh, you'll see it's been seconds and you'll see a car coming from pretty much the building here. You'll see the whole thing and they just never stop. So that would be a clear violation. The ones that, you know, were the lights on when they hit that corner, were, were they not on? You know, anything hinky, I will just deny it. We won't accept it.
And, and I think this is true, but do you know if the Lower Providence has seen a decrease in the incidence rate?
It's all new, Tessie, it's all, pretty much been this school year that we're seeing it this year.
I see.
Um, so I don't think there's a really good, they're seeing a lot of violations. Which I was surprised to see how many they're seeing. Now, they're only approving about half of them, but they're seeing thirty to forty a week.
I, I think this is a great program, I mean, you're talking about kids and, you know, the kids in a car, right? And I think that is more of a concern than privatizing tickets.
Right.
So I don't, I think it's a no-brainer.
The old-school way would, the, the bus driver had to report it to us, they had to somehow get a tag. Then they had to be able to identify the driver in court and it just, it just didn't work. And then we're putting this, the, the bus drivers are going to court, they're not getting paid. It, it, it wasn't working old-school unless we were sitting right there watching it.
And, and the fact of the matter, if there's thirty or forty a week, then it's an issue. And, you know, this is, I think, a way to monitor, we can monitor it better and see if there is a decrease or not as time goes on. And I think if it's not working, then we can readjust at that.
Right.
Well, you know, three years, five years, yeah, three years, five years. But, I mean, if it's not working, I mean, I don't know how it could not be working, right?
Right, it's gonna work.
Either you, they, there's a violation or there isn't a violation. You know?
We're, we're going to see violations on some of our state roads, that's where we're going to see them. We're going to see them on Welsh Road, we're going to see them on Bethelm Pike, we're going to see them on two oh two, we're going to see them on Summietown Pike. I could pretty much keep naming roads.
I mean, I sat out there with my kids and the bus and I've seen cars fly by and I, it's an issue. And I think this is a good way of trying to control that.
Can I just ask a logistical question in your memo? You said that the law, the law or the sign arm enforcement system is going to prohibit the driver of a vehicle from meeting or overtaking any bus? Does that, you, like, overtaking it? Or you mean just passing it? You're just talking about the little sense of passing it?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not like it prohibits you from movement, but it's to identify?
Correct.
And, and just for clarity as well, when they are stopping, when the buses are stopping to let students off or picking students up. Is there any warning that they're about to stop, beyond the braking obviously, but it's not yellow, it just turns right to red and the arm comes out?
No, it goes yellow first.
While they're slowing.
Yeah, there's, yeah, they should activate yellow first.
Bus drivers are very cognizant in making sure of signaling to drive.
Oh, no, I don't drive during the hours of kids being dropped, well, dismissed purposely, actually.
Chief, even if they're on state road and not lower?
Doesn't matter, the vehicle code was amended, uh, last summer to find this loophole where the civil penalty could be enforced. Which I think is a better option than getting, the citation for running school bus violation is an automatic suspension of your license.
Six points.
Um, a three hundred dollar fine, massive points, an insurance violation. You don't want to get a citation for passing a school bus.
Well, sir, I'll bring it over to you.
I understand passing, that's simple. The word meeting, how do they define that? Is that a certain distance that just stopped before the bus?
Yeah.
I think that's a thorough discretion.
What would you say? I, I always stop when you see him coming.
Yeah, I, I, I don't.
That's what I, that's another question I was going to ask next, thank you for asking it.
Right, I think, I, that's where it's going to come to discretion of seeing the video. And we're, are on the side of, nah, it was too close to call. You know, we're, we're, we're pretty, uh, we have a lot of common sense and we're pretty fair. So I think we will see clear violations and that's what we will approve.
Is this going to be well advertised?
It will be, there'll be a, that's part of the Bus Patrol also. We don't anticipate this occurring until September. They're going to, so once we get this agreement to Wissickin, they still have to vote on it. And all the work will take place in the summer, so it'll be September before we start seeing this and there'll be a media blitz that we all do together.
Yeah, maybe an education piece too, like so people are reminded of the rules that they studied when they pass their driver's test. How many feedback you're supposed to be?
Yes. Do you remember?
Fifty?
Do you remember, Ms. Martin?
Dude, I stop when that underbell.
Any additional questions from the board or the public? So I'd like to make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Wissickin School District for the enforcement of the Bus Patrol system. Between Lower Gwinnett Township Police, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Next up is the consideration of our invoice report, has everyone had an opportunity to review the invoice report? Any questions or concerns? Very good, I'd like to make a motion to approve our invoice report, is there a second?
Again?
All those in favor? Motion carries, next up is the minutes from our April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Supervisor meeting. Is there any questions or comments about those minutes? Has everyone had an opportunity to review? No questions, no comments? I'd like to make a motion to approve the minute for our April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries. Um, next up is the Supervisor Liaison Report, which are included in our board packet, everyone had the opportunity to read them at their leisure. Staff updates, are there any staff updates?
Yes, thank you, good evening. A quick emergency management update, I promised I'd talk about training and what we're doing, here I am fulfilling my promise. So, I've been able to get, since the board approved the plan, I started working with Chief Kenny's team and we are planning a joint emergency management police training session in the next couple of months. Uh, so I'll have that underway shortly, that'll talk a little bit about how the police tactics work in conjunction to the side of emergency management and support. So that's one good one coming up. A second one, the good folks at Johnson and Johnson are very interested in having the team from all of the first responders, emergency management around the township come in and get a good overview of their facility, so that if they do need to respond to something, everybody's familiar with what's going on and what's there. So we've scheduled a training night in September for everybody to go out to that spot. Finally, I am participating in monthly drills, not drills, but training sessions with the county that are ongoing. So the next one's going to be tomorrow, actually, talking about weather notification and alerts, so that I'll be on top of that stuff and I can spread that to the staff as well. So, any questions, feel free to pass them on.
Sounds great, are there any other organizations in Lower Gwinnett that you should collaborate with, like Johnson and Johnson?
Absolutely, so that's part of the process I've been doing with reaching out. I know the police do a lot of things, like with Quaid at Mercy and schools and places like that. So we're kind of going piece by piece to go around to them, police are doing some, fire departments doing some, and then we're trying to get it coordinated together as well.
Thank you, John. Any additional staff updates?
Yes, we have the electric recycling and shredding event this Saturday. I will thank this team, putting it together, it was very successful, Olympic G and Shell. Being here on Saturday, uh, for the event, and the one, or called the first department, they will be here on Saturday. And one out on Wednesday, Thursday to three senior, many facilities in the township. I mean, a little bit of two and a half drops, it's electric.
Wow.
Some of your stuff, they're part of the people get here and that.
Definitely the high, one of the highlights with the treaty. I mean, people love this.
And since Chad is here, so much to be done.
So yeah, there's, there's, this on, okay. There's, it has been a lot of activity, is, is everybody seen out there? We've, we've been battling with, you know, people's frustrations over the past two to three weeks or so. When there's been lane closures on, on Norristown Road. That's been compounded at times by Pico doing independent utility work at the intersection as well. And then a couple of weeks ago, um, the processor and the traffic signal controller at the intersection malfunctioned and went out of commission. So, um, the timings at the intersection had to go on a set pattern instead of the actuated or changing patterns to accommodate different travel patterns during the day. So, we've been battling through that the last couple of weeks. Should seem to some improvement starting this week, we've went to a split phasing signal plan for Norristown Road and Summietown Pike, um, which got implemented this week for, um, for instances when Norristown Road lane closure has to happen again in the future. Hopefully the delays will be reduced somewhat on Norristown Road that people have been primarily frustrated with. Recently, um, the new processor for the traffic signal come in next week and it'll be able to go back to the adaptive control, which means it'll adjust the timings regularly based off traffic volumes that are moving through the intersection at any given time. But hopefully everybody's starting to notice some of the progress out there in terms of the curbing installation, the excavation, it's been done for widening. There's still some barrier wall that has to be installed on Norristown Road over the next week or so. Along with curbing transitions into it. Um, and then once that's complete, um, they'll be able to turn towards, um, you know, completing the actual widening work that they've excavated for. The pipe along Summietown Pike, um, that we've discussed recently, the installation of that was completed today. There's still some connection work to manholes that has to be completed and we're looking to resolve that over the coming days to wrap that up. So, things are moving along nicely, we've been fighting through some frustrations. Hopefully we're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel and before you know it, um, July and August will be here. And we'll be, we'll be close to, to a completed project.
We're still on target for?
Yeah, as far as we know, we're still on schedule, we have our next progress meeting with JDM tomorrow to talk about what the three to four week look ahead is for construction activity and it will provide the township with an update after our meeting tomorrow. Or Thursday, I'm sorry.
And so you believe the traffic signals issue will be fixed next week?
The split phasing went in this week, so that should help with the, the Norristown Road delays when there's lane closures. It's not going to make it perfect, but it'll make it a little bit better than what it has. And then next week, um, the new processor for the controller will come in, which will allow to go back to the, the fluctuating timings to, to adapt to whatever the traffic patterns are during the course of the day.
So, I was driving on Norristown Road yesterday about ten o'clock in the morning. And I was making a right, maybe to come here. But the left turn arrow was on and the Summietown green light was on. Same time. The traffic engineer, but that seems bad. And actually, the guys who were working there, the Marcy guys prevented an accident. Because there were people turning left and the cars on Marcy, in Summietown were coming across Marcy, across Beckland and up Marcy. I'm assuming that was fixed, I mentioned this to Mimi otherwise. Today?
Yeah, I mean, well, I'll follow up on it and make sure we look into it and make sure there's no issues. But in general, the way the phasing works, and you probably noticed that there's a phase where just the left turns on Summietown Pike and Norristown Road go at the same time. And then the next phase after that is where all movements are permitted.
The left turn signal, left, left from Norristown to Bethelm Pike
Right.
Was on, the arrow was on. And the green to go across Summietown to Norristown was also on.
The oncoming?
So oncoming traffic was going straight while they were making the left turn. And I said the Marcy guys got right out there and sort of put a stop to it, but and it was probably just, I'm hoping it was just literally that random moment, I just happened to be there.
And it might have been, I'm not sure the exact times on Monday, but on Monday they were out doing the rewiring of the controller cabinet that was needed to implement the split phasing. But I'll tell our inspector to keep.
Yeah, I understand, there was, there was nobody there, I mean, if the Marcy guys weren't there, there definitely would have been an accident. There was nobody there to sort of say, you know, there was no flagger there or anybody there to make sure it was all right, it was just happenstance.
Okay.
Wait a minute, it all worked out, the Marcy guy.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
I'll just add a comment that the, the lights are not synchronized maybe between, oh, you already know this.
Yeah, I already know that.
It's already, you know, people extending into the, um, cross intersection down in front of C V S.
Yeah, when, when the processor failed. Yeah, when, when the processor failed a couple of weeks ago, we had to go to set timings. So the coordination between each of the traffic signaledized intersections, we lost that capability during that time. So that added to some of the traffic frustrations over the last couple of weeks.
Keeping my fingers crossed that we get through this smoothly. Aerial intersection right now.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any additional staff update?
Oh, Fred.
Yeah, this is a hot off the presses, just found this out. Our paving contractor would like to start next week, weather permitting. So that's a lot earlier than we usually have our paving done. But it's nothing near any schools or anything, so it shouldn't interfere with that. And hopefully they get in and get out fast without bothering too many people.
Well, that's exciting. Thank you, Fred. Anyone else? Anything else? No? Yes.
Can't miss them.
I think you just took Janine's supervisor statement, but that's okay.
I love a family-friendly event.
I'll start off as supervisor comments, Tessie.
Yeah, I just, I want to put in a plug for the Lower Gwinnett EAC. And one of the activities that's ongoing, I was able to take advantage of the bird walk this morning. Steve Saif here, EAC Associate provides that. And it, it reminded me of what a nice educational event this is that Steve provides. And also because of the really interesting number of birds we saw in the Trelle and Park, it, it just reminds me of how important these pockets of parkland and woodland in Lower Gwinnett are for our environment. We saw twenty-three different species of birds just within, you know, a short period of time. So I always appreciate all the work that's, the public works and the parks departments put into maintaining these areas. So that's all.
I'm out for the touch of chalk and fingers crossed there's no rain.
This month is AAPI Heritage Month, so just give your favorite AAPI friend a hug.
I just want to remind everybody about the touch of chalk this Saturday. And I think that's it. We're not giving, we're not going to talk about Fall Fest yet, right?
Yeah, let's get through touch of chalk. Oh.
Yeah.
All right. But it's the time conference if you're marking.
I mean, Janine tells me every day, so I just figured. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.